All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council on this May 3rd, 2022. It is 6:31. We are in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We would like to excuse Councilman Jake Fitzmona from this meeting, and we're going to say everybody else is here. Mr. Huns is going to be a minute late. We now have our minutes of April 26th. Do we have any discussion or emotion on the minutes?
I move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Hey, thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic. Oh, I don't have to ask you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those pass unanimously. All right. We will now have our public comment period. Oh, nope. I just want to jump through everything today. Sorry, trying to make this the shortest meeting ever. Um, our opening ceremony, sorry, is Councilman Harmon.
So, uh, I've just spent the last 10 days out of the country. And actually, last night I was, I saw a little thing on social media from somebody in England, and they were complaining about things in America. And they were asking all their friends, you know, what are, what are your complaints about America when you go visit America? And so I read through some of their comments and wasn't anything real substantial. Uh, when I think about freedom in America and, and what this country provides and offers, they, they weren't thinking in the big picture. They were thinking little things like, what's the, when you, when you touch your credit card on the tap, tap to pay, right? We don't have enough of that here. In England, it's like 90% of everything is tapped to pay. So that was their big deal. Like, wow, that's, that's really not a big issue. But, uh, but it was wonderful to come back to, uh, to America and makes me grateful to live here. When I think about the pledge, I think about a couple of things, but the last sentence that we say is for liberty and justice for all. And that's not collective liberty and collective justice. That's individual liberty, that we fight for your liberty and yours and yours and yours and yours, individual. And also for justice individually, that we're, we're protecting that individually, not collectively. And I'm just grateful to live here and to, to serve the citizens of West Valley and to help them help protect their liberty and justice in this small way. And with that, if we'll, if I can lead you to it, the pledge.
All right, well now, we'll now move to the comment, public comment period. Our comment period is 30 minutes. Any person wishing to speak must, shall limit their comments to five minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, please approach the mic. And if you have not signed up, give us your name and address. All comments should be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. Speakers should not expect any debate with the mayor, city council, or the staff. They will have time to follow up after your comments. So we have one person that has signed up. If you want to come to the front. Just give us your name.
Yes, I put my address on there this time. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Florida's smiling. Yeah, everybody knows my address. The other day, we had a great Arbor Day event. The mayor mentioned it in the study meeting, planting more trees. We need to do more of that around the city. Darren, I believe, at the Arbor, just, man, what a knowledgeable guy. He's spewing out facts and about these trees, and it's a passion to him. And it was just so great. They had about a dozen kids that came out, and some of them were just as knowledgeable. I mean, these are 14, 15, 16-year-old kids, and the knowledge that they had, he's asking them questions, and they knew the answers. And I'm like, wow, you know, about trees. And he was telling us, you know, about a couple of trees he was, they were planting in the park that have berries for the wildlife, and, and just the different trees. It was, it'd be really cool to have more information about them. I know the, the mayor talked about it. I'm going to bring it up with the clean and beautiful, because I think that's something that maybe with Park and Rec that we can get behind and, and do something like that, even if it's just a simple information about the trees, because I would like to know about the trees, too. Leads into water. I think it's time that you guys, we need to start looking about a water ordinance. People are turning on their sprinklers now, and they're turning on their clocks, and they're watering the sky, the sidewalk, the streets, because they don't realize that their lines have broken in the wintertime, freezing. They come on in the middle of the night, and there's really nothing we can do about that. The counties, you know, it's talking about it, too. And it's something we need to be in front of and possibly get an ordinance out there about at least repairing broken sprinklers. Somehow, we can report them. Something like that. It's just, there's so much wasted water just shooting up in the sky. And so the, and then the other thing, there's a lot of people running for election, and one of the number one topics they're talking about, wide open budget discussions. I would like to see that in West Valley City. And what I mean is, it, it's pretty well open, but the city manager talks about the budget pods or the program pods. I personally would like to see that information. I don't think it's proprietary, proprietary information that the public can't see. I would like to see it attached on the, the things, what the priorities could be for the city, what we need to have do. And then it might help the citizens that come in, in six months, and say, why, why am I, I'm not getting my sidewalk? You know, why is it number 12 on the list instead of number, well, you know, the, we, we have a park that had a sinkhole, and I just picking up stuff. And, and so there'd be the priorities, and I might be the only one, well, Mr. Mark, I might be, you know, another one that might look at that, but it would be more of an open thing, and I hear about it, but I don't get to see the list and stuff. And I think that's something that should be put out, you know, to the public. That's all I have for this part.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else that would wish to speak that did not have a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone online that wanted to speak in public comment?
Not for this item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Pyle, would you like to comment?
Uh, no, ma'am. Thank you.
Turn it to the council. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and go to our public hearings. We have application GPZ dash 3 dash 2022. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm sorry, I'm a little slow on this. It's now been, what, three months since I kind of took over this duty again, and I still forget that I'm doing it. So, we have a general plan zone change request from general commercial, uh, from RB to C2 at 4543 and 4547 South, 4,000 West, at point 73 acres. And this one's a little unusual as opposed to our usual applications in that the applicant has requested that we deny it for reasons I don't, I'm not going to go into the detail of, although they were discussed publicly and the council was aware of them as they were discussed, I believe it was one week ago, maybe two, but I think it was one week ago. So that is the item before you, um, Mayor and Council. If you have any other questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Our first action item on this application is ordinance 22-18, and I will turn it to the council now for either comment or emotion. No, let's not. I am just trying to speed through. Sorry, and thank you, Lars. I appreciate that. So we will now open the public comment period for this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address this application? Okay, seeing none, we will close the comment, or the public hearing, and turn it back to the council for consideration of ordinance 22-18.
I move that we, I move that we deny ordinance 22-18. Second.
Okay, we'll turn it to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon? Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next, uh, action item is ordinance 22-19, addressing the same application. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to deny ordinance 2219.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now turn to application. Well, this is our CBG annual action report. Mr. Pyle, would you like to explain that anymore?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So as you, I think you mentioned, it's, it's an annual process that we go through, and we get an allotment each year from the federal government for various projects that are allowed in specific areas determined by income, and it is called the Community Development Block Round or CDBG program. There is an application process, a committee that considers the applications, which then makes a recommendation through administration, who then presents that in its recommended form to the council, which they have for consideration before them tonight. We also have the ability or the opportunity to have a public hearing so that any that are interested may comment on the applications or the process.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the public hearing for the CBD, CBGB, whatever.
CDBG.
I know, I can't say it right, no matter what I do. Um, we have four people online. So Ms. Kamic, would you like to let them in?
I guess the first person that signed up is Jeannie Ashby. Uh, Jeannie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, my name is Jeannie Ashby. I'm with the Inbetween. Um, we're very grateful for the opportunity to talk to you for a minute or two today and for the ongoing support that the Inbetween has received in the past from West Valley City. We are not recommended for the $10,000 that we requested this time, but we are hopeful that we will be considered again in the future. And we respect the decision-making process, process of West Valley City, and we know that the recommendations the committee made include a lot of really important and worthwhile organizations. And with limited funding, you can only make so much of a difference. So we're very grateful for past and hopefully future support. For those who don't know, um, the Inbetween provides end-of-life care for people experiencing homelessness. We also provide, um, care for those who need medical respite care. So those who are in need of surgeries or in need of other life-saving treatments can come to the Inbetween to recuperate and, um, and rest. There's, um, unfortunately, um, over 100 people each year die on the streets of our community. It's hard to even imagine. Um, many life-saving treatments like chemotherapy and kidney dialysis are not available for people who don't have an address. Um, shelters, motels, and other temporary housing solutions are struggling with capacity, and they don't have the expertise to provide adequate medical support. So the Inbetween becomes, um, a critical service in our community. Recently, about two weeks ago, the 100th patient passed away peacefully in his very own bed, surrounded by the caring staff and volunteers at the Inbetween. And it's your support that makes that kind of success possible. We're so grateful for everything that you've done in the past and, um, and will continue to work to partner with West Valley City in the future. Thanks for taking the time to listen.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Uh, the second person that signed up is Nicholas Webster. Nicholas, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Indeed, thank you very much. So I am here to represent Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Utah in their application to review our request for $10,000 in funding for one-to-one youth mentoring in West Valley City. Um, in reviewing the CDBG recommendations for the 2022 to 2023 fiscal year, nearly half of the money allocated for public services is going to areas related to public safety. So clearly, this is a very important item in the West Valley City budget. The efficacy of spending in these areas is rather easy to evaluate. Now, at the end of the fiscal year, one can quantify the number of persons given assistance through domestic violence shelters or the number of people arrested. It is easy to visualize the impact of the dollars allocated in the community. Unfortunately, these approaches are measures to address the impacts of events that have already occurred. Persons who utilize programs focused upon domestic violence and crime have experienced domestic violence or crime. Although these, these programs are a tremendous benefit, they do not address the underlying cause. Regardless of how effective these programs may be, they cannot eliminate the pain and suffering that is caused by experiencing these events. In order to address the underlying cause of these events, in order to prevent persons from engaging criminal behavior and causing the associated pain and suffering, another approach is necessary. This is the focus of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Utah. Through one-to-one youth mentoring, we pair trained mentors with youth who are at risk of engaging in antisocial behaviors such as domestic violence and crime. Unfortunately, unlike the approaches listed previously, we cannot easily quantify the efficacy of our preventative programs. There is no way to empirically verify the number of destructive actions prevented, the dollars saved, or the number of potential criminals who never offended. On the other hand, I can offer these insights regarding to the efficacy of our programs over the past 30 months. Now, over the past 30 months, 77% of the children served by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Utah have improved or maintained their academic performance. 93% of mentored kids graduated from high school. 80% stayed strong or saw a meaningful decrease in their depressive symptoms. 93% reported ongoing or improved emotional regulation ability. 73% improved or maintained in goal-setting skills. 91% reported better or sustained social competence, such as positive peer relationships. 96% avoided substance use. 90% had fewer or no increase in school discipline issues or bullying behaviors. And 81% had fewer or no increase in status offenses. Now, recall that the children with whom we work have experienced multiple adverse childhood experiences, or what are called ACEs, and as such, are at risk for antisocial behavior. The statistics that I just mentioned demonstrate the effectiveness of our programs. Providing children with education and opportunities within the community and helping them to develop so, social competence and become connected with their community can serve to diminish criminal activity. Now, there is an idea that, for lack of a better term, is referred to as the Kingdom of Ends. Now, the Kingdom of Ends is an ideal community in which every person is self-motivated to be good, honest, law-abiding citizens. Within this community, uh, no one commits crimes because they know it is wrong, and they lack the desire to engage in those activities. Now, clearly, this is a utopian society and does not exist, but the principle is still maintained. If we can prevent impressionable children from engaging in at-risk behavior, if we can offer them with the mentoring and education they need and provide them with opportunities within their community, we can make them good citizens and prevent crime, rather than spending, spending money to address it after the fact. Um, and I think that this also relates to the councilman's, uh, previous comment regarding our personal freedoms. Now, if we can cultivate the types of people that are respectful, that are honest, that are law-abiding, we can enjoy more freedoms. Freedoms tend to be limited when people cannot be trusted. Thus, if we can create trustworthy, good citizens, we can enhance our freedoms. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person is Bailey White. Um, Bailey, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I know you've mentioned that you wanted to keep this as short a meeting as possible, which I am always on board for, so I will be very quick. Um, I'm with, I am the director of grants and compliance at The Road Home, and I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for taking the time to review applications and consider our requests. We're not currently recommended for funding, but we've worked with your team closely in the past. Um, currently, we're operating 800 beds of emergency shelter. There's 300 at the Men's Resource Center, 200 at the Gail Miller, and 300 at the Midvale Family Resource Center. We also just closed out a bunch of our winter overflow programs. And last year during our fiscal year, we were able to provide services to 4,459 individuals so that we could connect them with housing and help them end their homeless crisis as quickly as possible. So we are super excited to connect the people across our shelter programs and our housing programs with the community resources that West Valley is going to fund, and we look forward to working together to find solutions to ending homelessness in West Valley City and Salt Lake County in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and the last person is Josie White. Josie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
So we cannot hear you. Nope, can't hear you, Josie.
Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, that looks like a yes. Um, so my name's Josie. I'm representing South Valley Services tonight. We would like to thank the council for your consideration of funding. We have valued our partnership with West Valley in the past, and are looking forward to working with you in the future. I would like to talk a little bit about our shelter and all the services that are offered within that shelter. First, our shelter is confidentially located, which means it's an ideal location for domestic violence victims whose lives have been deemed in, in imminent danger. We also serve men, which is, which is unique to the domestic violence service providers in this county. But within our shelter, we have a wide variety of programming for adults and children. Children in our care receive therapeutic care with a therapist designated solely to them and their treatment. That therapist works with the child to make sure that domestic violence doesn't tear you down beyond generations, as well as reducing trauma the child may have, may have, um, they have had. Um, we also provide therapy for adults, case management, and we do connect them with long-term stable housing after their shelter stays to guarantee better outcomes for their children. Uh, again, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Yep, that's everyone.
Okay, was there anyone here that wanted to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment, or public hearing, and I'll turn it to the council for action on resolution 22-80.
Um, motion to approve resolution 22-80.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next public hearing will be to address, we will accept comment on the condemnation of real property owned by Valley Crossroads Incorporated, located at 4860 West, 4700 South. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it to a, to the council. Our action item is resolution 22-81.
Move to approve resolution 22-81.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will open our next public hearing to accept comments regarding the condemnation of real property operated by Salt Lake Valley Mental Health Board, located at 4980 West, 4700 South. And just as a note, these are just to replace the handicap ramps on their locations. So this is the mechanism to which we need to do that. The resolution will be 22-82. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the comment period, public hearing, and turn it to the council for consideration of resolution 22-82.
Motion to approve 22-82.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Maryling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to resolution 22-83, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. So our, um, annual budget cycle brings us to this point this evening on May the 3rd, where we are required by state statute to adopt what is called a tentative budget. The tentative budget really basically includes the bulk of, and the general philosophy of what, during the previous months, we've discussed is how we foresee the annual budget for the upcoming year, starting July 1st through the next June 30th, so that would be 2022 and 2023, will be formed. Uh, our general fund, what we call our general operating budget, is approximately forecasted $98.7 million. And then we have a number of other smaller enterprise-type funds, like our sanitation fund, uh, as well as three separate meetings and other entities that we will be considering after this meeting. Uh, I should mention that the tentative budget, again, is part of a process that will go on, foreseeing a final adoption of the budget on August the 9th of this year, at which time there will be further public hearing and, uh, presentation. But at this point, this is really sort of a formality in terms of you've received a budget, you see it, you know, you participated in the process, and therefore, we're accepting it. You see it, you know, you participated in the process, and therefore we're accepting it as that tentative budget.
Okay, thank you. I will now turn it to the council for comments or a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty two dash eighty three. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Hi.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
And Mary Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to our consent agenda that consists of two items, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. So these are sort of typical of our normal consent agendas. There's two items. Both of them are right away purchase agreements and warranty deeds and temporary construction easements. One of them is for forty four hundred dollars. And the other one is for. Loading quickly, five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council. We can take them both of one or individually.
Move to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mary Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no other business. We do have three meetings following this one. So we'll close this one out. I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
RDAs first. We'll call to order the RDA meeting held today, May third at seven oh two. We have everyone here except for Councilman Tsimanu. In your minutes, you should have the the meeting of the minutes of January fourth. Any comment or action on that?
I've moved for approval.
Second.
Do we need to have a roll call?
You can just ask.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wayne, do you have? Anything you want to add?
Thank you, sir. I don't have any projects RDA type to discuss tonight. My only report will consist of the budget discussion and a later item.
Okay, we have resolution twenty two oh one. Mr. Pyle.
Okay, thank you, sir. So as within the regular city council meeting. In the RDA, we also have to adopt a tentative budget for each of those entities. In the redevelopment agency, there are no major changes from last year. There are fourteen different. Project areas that have different projects that are in them, and they're at different points in their lifespans. We've gone over this in previous meetings, and as I mentioned, there's really not any kind of real substantive change financially from last year.
Hey, any comment or action from the council?
I move forward to approve a resolution twenty two dash zero one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we need the.
Yeah.
Mr. Whatstone?
Yes.
Mr. Hugh?
Hi.
Miss Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Harmon?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the RDA meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor.
Aye.
Thanks for your patience. My first RDA meeting.
Call to order the housing authority and note that we've had an opening ceremony and all members are present except for. Mr. Fatise Manu, who is excused. We need an approval for the minutes of January fourth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Pyle, any reports?
No, sir, thank you.
Will you introduce the resolution twenty two dash zero one, please?
I will. Thank you, sir. So as with the other meetings, we have before you the item tonight for consideration of a tentative adoption. Sorry, tentative budget adoption for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, as with the RDA, although in a much different financial amount and also in purpose, there's not really. Too much in change from last year. We have about three and a half million dollars in rental assistance, housing assistance, vouchers, and federal income that comes in to supply that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? And we'll turn to Ms. Kimak for the roll call vote.
Mr. Whatstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hugh?
Hi.
Miss Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our business. We have one more motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.
Now, we'd like to call to order the building authority. We've had our opening ceremony and roll call. All are present except Mr. Fifty Sumano, who is excused. And the first item of business is the approval of minutes for April twenty sixth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's moved in second. It all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pyle?
No report, sir.
Okay, would you like to introduce resolution twenty two dash zero two?
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is the fourth tentative budget item that we'll consider this evening. And this, the building authority does swing wildly from year to year. I may make out it never looks the same from one year to the next. And the reason for that is because. The building authority is a legal entity is really just set up to disperse and take care of debt service payments on projects that have been built in the past. And these currently range all the way from. The theater or the arena to road projects and sanitation projects that have done. That have been done in the recent past. This year's amount of expenditure through that legal entity is just over seven point one million dollars.
Thank you to the authority.
I would motion to approve resolution twenty two dash zero two.
Second.
Moved in second and Ms. Kamic.
Mr. Whatstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hugh?
Hi.
Miss Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That leaves one final motion for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.